Okay, let's open the special meeting of the Marquette Township Board. Today is Tuesday, May 10th. It's 5:00 PM, 2016, sorry. And roll call.
Hey, trustee Trescott's absent and excused. Trustee LaRue?
Here.
Trustee Marks?
Present.
Trustee Pompo?
Here.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yeah.
Clerk Retires here and Supervisor Durant?
Here.
Staff present is manager Gerard and Steve Peltor's here. He's on our planning commission, but he is also our realtor for the property. And guest Lee Francisco is here.
Thanks.
And a member of the Mining Journal's here.
Yay. A public comment directed to the items? Any comment right now?
Oh, we're going to approve the agenda first.
Oh, I missed that, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion, approve the agenda. Support.
In support, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Now, public comment. If anybody wants to add anything, you want to say anything up front before we start talking? Or wait till later?
Does anybody have any questions ahead of time before we start talking?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Go up there and just state your name and address, please, Lee, for the record.
Yeah, Lee Francisco, 2915 Parkview Drive, Marquette, Michigan. One thing that I would like to clarify is the fact that 906 Technologies will not be buying the building. It's actually another entity. So, yep.
Okay. And who is that other entity?
I, myself, Russell Jeter, and I've talked to a couple of other people.
So, it's kind of different than 906 altogether? It's a different company?
Yeah, there's a few common owners of 906 Technologies and 906 Engineering who are forming a different company for legal reasons to purchase this building.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay. We don't have to have it identified? We don't have to have it identified ahead of time?
As long as you have a hand assigned, you're okay.
Okay. So, I figured the best way, since we didn't quite get everybody's comments and writing for me to compile something, that we would just kind of go down the line and see. We have just three written opinions from the board. And they're kind of close, but not quite. So, I'd rather have this be kind of controlled discussion, so we're not all interrupting and stuff, but let's keep it a little looser than a regular meeting. Does anybody want to start with whatever comments they want to make? Go ahead, Ernie.
I usually start. No one understands what I say half the time, anyway.
Not true.
Okay. Looking at the appraised value and looking at what's been offered and kicking this around for four or five days now, I'm looking at splitting the difference between the appraised value, which is $579, and $500,000, coming up with $539,000 in that. Part of the reason is that we are a governmental entity, a lot different than a private one. You're following that?
Oh, yeah.
In essence, we have almost 4,000 stockholders that we have to be concerned with in that. So, we're trying to do the best we can for the township as a whole and the property individuals within the township in that. I'm looking at that end of it from my perspective. Also, I looked at somehow or other, share the cost for the documentations to... How do I want to put it? All the paperwork.
Closing costs?
Closing costs in that. And the other one I had a concern with in that, and I talked to a few people in that, with the deposit of $2,000 in that, I thought was quite low. I think we should look at that being raised up. And part of the reason in looking at the document itself is that I was trying to go through and find something in there that would stop, that would indicate that they couldn't really back out of it for any reason in that. And there's nothing in there. Sure, they're going to have to do some engineering and some other stuff to make sure it's what they want in that, too. But they have 60 days in that. 60 days is a long time, but I don't think we can shorten that up with what has to be done at this point in time in that. So, I think the biggest things I have is trying to look at splitting the cost between the appraised value and the offer, somehow do something with the deposit so that, to me, it shows that they are very interested in the property and the building in that, and share the costs with the paperwork in that that comes through. And listening to them, what they discussed at the meeting and that, what their future plans are, their long-range plans, I think, are very great for the property itself in the long range in that. I think it'll be a great asset to the township in that. But here, I have to look at it as an elected official here until we actually see some site plans, some other things in that. You can talk as much as you want in that and show as much as you want in that. And I have a feeling it's going to come to pass, but being on the board as long as I have, people always ask me, what's going to happen? I say, I don't have any idea. There's a lot of discussions until they actually walk in the door with some paperwork. We can't really say one way or another in that, so. So, those are the three things I would have, is splitting the cost, do something with the deposit, and something with the cost with the paperwork in that. Those are the three areas I'd like to talk about.
Okay. John, go ahead.
Some of the commitments that Ernie's talked about need to be discussed, but my opinion on the sale is pretty... It's without a lot of other comment. I just looked at the facts. We've been offered $500,000. The property's appraised at $579, and respectfully, I propose that the township accept an offer of $525, which I think is fair. And because this would be a real plus for the township, I think we need to look at it with an eye towards what are the tax dollars we're going to get back out of this? And whatever the name is that precedes LLC will get hashed out with time. But to me, that's an under-appraised amount of $54,000. And that'll give them a lot of encouragement to improve the property and get very busy with making sure that this is a firm, acceptable, cooperative venture between the township and this organization, which we really need to encourage. We want this kind of operation in the township, and I think we should do what we can to encourage it, and that's one way to do that. $54,000 under appraised value is a considerable amount of money, but that ought to give them a lot of encouragement to get started.
Dan, we're on this side of the table.
Okay, initially, I thought basically the offer was too low also, but then listening to the discussion at the board meeting that night about the appraised values and what people are getting for the properties now, kind of opened up my eyes a little bit. I mean, I agree that I'm looking very forward to getting some more business out here in the township. And my biggest concern has always been that we've been sitting there with an empty building for two and a half or three years and haven't collected taxes money on it. We've been spending money for utilities and maintenance of that building, plus it's three years of not being able to put that money into the loan, which is the whole purpose of the selling of the buildings. So, I never did come up with what I thought would be a value. I'm just saying that I'm willing to listen to what everybody comes up with, and I'm on board with whatever we decide. I just want to get this thing sold. Not that I'm in a hurry, you know, it sounds like we're in a big hurry to get rid of it, but I really do want to get it onto our tax roll.
So, what you're saying is you're okay with their proposal? The amount? Okay. Who's next? Pete? Randy? Pete?
Well, I started looking at this when I started looking at the property across the street, and I would have liked to seen the whole thing go at one time. But if we accept the 500, what are we going to accept for the other parcel there? We had it on the market for 1.3 million before. It's going to be 500 million? Or 500 million, you know how we wish.
Yeah, okay. We'll sign that one. Who have you got in mind, Pete?
Get the paper out.
Just looking at, after reading this thing the other night, and I decided, okay, we could accept 50 or 500, but with agreement that they will not file for tax, you know? That has to be part of anything. Any agreement that we agree with right now, that has to be part of it, that they will not file under a direct store one. I had 550 plus that agreement, that's what I had, because I think we're going to, might lose on our property across the street, you know? What are we going to get for that?
I don't know. That might be a Roger question, but I don't know that we can put that stipulation in anything yet. We'd have to check and see.
Roger's going to have to check, you know, all the Is and Ts, you know, the final document anyway, and make sure we're in compliance with all the rules.
Well, you could have a consensus of a gentleman agreement in that, you know, something like that, because otherwise, just leave that to rigor, you know, appraised value.
I guess I don't have much to say, other than I've listened to everyone's opinion here. I would agree with treasurer and trustee Marks. I do think we should sell it as close to the appraised value as possible for our residents. I would be okay with splitting the difference, as the treasurer said, getting it, you know, getting it down a little bit, or even 525, I wouldn't have a problem with that. But I think we got to, we got to do something with it and move this along, I think, so I think that would be good. That's all I got to say.
Okay. What we, one of the things we threw around before was what do we do if a property, if a purchaser whom we've already worked with wanted to buy the property before we decided to take on Steve's services?
You can't leave that bothering, because, I mean, they're sitting back there. They should have been up here when, it's been in the paper now.
Pete, let me say my two cents, please.
You've got three minutes.
I just want to bring that out. I think it's important to think that now we've got a $30-some-thousand commission we're looking at, and that was one of the reasons we wanted to try to sell it, not only as a package, but as a whole, so that we didn't have to, we could give as much back for it as we had put into it or thought that it was worth. Okay? I just want you to consider that, because not only do we have a lower-than-appraised value offer, but now we've got the commission to consider. So, what I'm kind of thinking is, I'm kind of going toward Ernie's idea of a little bit higher, to at least cover the commission, that we're not going so far below the appraised value. And of course, our intent is to put it on this building anyway. That's what we want to do. Just a minute, just a minute.
Sure. Still under three minutes.
Actually, I am pretty much finished with... I don't like the $2,000 deposit. I think that needs to be increased. But I would probably, I would probably agree to the 5, you know, you've got to think we're the 535. We're losing 700, 70-some-hundred thousand, or $70-some-thousand by the time you take the reduction out and the commission. Now, I am glad that Steve's got it personally. I said in the beginning that I thought we should let somebody else take care of it, because that's a lot of legwork, phone calls, paperwork, responsibility. We don't have that expertise. He has the connections. He has the time to do this, to make the meetings and everything, so I'm glad we did that. So, I'm not anywhere saying we shouldn't have done it, but I'm just looking at the amount of money that the township would get back. So, I would agree with Ernie's proposal of 535 and ask for a little more upfront money. I think that's, those are my only two considerations. Okay. Pete, did you want to finish your thought?
No, I guess not.
John?
The only point I wanted to make was the difference between what the treasurer is proposing and what I proposed is only $10,000. So, we're very close, and it sounds, at least my reading of the board is pretty much, most of the board has indicated an acceptance of that figure within 10, that is now within $10,000 of each other. So, how you want to treat that is the chair's duty, but you can either do it, or you can even split the difference on that.
What are you, what are you thinking about the deposit? What's your?
I think his request, a larger deposit, is fair, and the conditions of time involved in resolving the issue of whether the building will meet their requirements for expansion. So, all of that needs to be, those conditions need to be reduced to a timeframe. To me, Representative, Senator?
Senator Marks?
Trustee?
Trustee.
Please. Oh, where are you going?
Well, he's got his buttons with him. The point is, is that we need to get this thing on the tax roll. And so, I would say trustee Pompo's suggestion that let's roll this along is a valid comment to make. And I, to me, I don't think the differences are so great right now between the board members' suggestions that we should delay it any longer. I would take some kind of a roll, and let's find out where we are, and let's make an offer.
Dan, did you have something else?
Well, I just wanted to re-comment that the, you know, I understand where you're coming from about the fact that we would have liked to sold both of them together, and we had other people out there that are interested in it, but this is the first offer we've had in two and a half years that are ready to actually buy. So, you know, if it's been two and a half years, I don't know how long it's going to go. I don't want to sit for another two and a half years.
You don't want to discourage it either.
Right. So, that's just my comment.
Pete, did you have something else?
Non-refundable deposit?
It's kind of whatever we want to put in it and see if it'd be accepted.
Have they gone through the billing already? Both buildings?
I, yeah, I would think they'd have to to see if it would...
Several times, yeah.
I hope so.
Steve, go ahead.
Steve Peltor, Wood Realty, you're a realtor for the building. As you know, I'm looking at the township's best interest, but I want to look overall, and I want to be fair, and I'm biased on the whole thing. As I told you at the last meeting, there was three different properties that, in fact, I had both the listing and the sale on, and that was the Shaft, that was Household Appliance and Bonanza. All of them with the appraised value versus what the sale price was, and every single one of them was anywhere from $100,000 at the low price to up to about $300,000 or $400,000 on the higher-priced ones. So, that's quite a difference. That's even more than what 906 Technologies or the new LLC is talking about. And I know, Ernie, I can appreciate, you know, trying to split the difference, but these guys at 906, and Lee maybe can expand on it, they are in a lease situation right now. And in order to get out of the lease, they are going to be also working with the contractor that owns the building. So, they're not even going to be getting competitive bids. They'll be working just specifically with one contractor. And so, I'm not sure, I can't say if they're going to be paying higher or lower, or what they're going to be paying. But at the same time, they're doing their due diligence to try to make this happen. And in order to make this happen, they have to get out of the lease. In order to get out of the lease, they have to work with the person that owns the building. So, that's going to cost them more money. Okay? I just want you to know that. And I know, Ernie, you're talking about, you know, closing costs and everything else, but they have their own closing costs. Their closing costs will be as much, if not more, than the closing costs that you will experience on a seller's end, as far as that goes. So, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to force anything down anybody's throat, because I'm working, okay, I'm working for you. I am working, you know, as a realtor, too. I have my hands on the table, okay? But at the same time, I don't want to lose this. There isn't anybody else out there at this point. I've shown the place. I've talked to, you know, a couple of people on it, but there's only one interest. Pete, to answer your question, I know you said it had 1.3. Well, 1.3 was because there was another buyer at another point that was offered that 1.3. But I guess, you know, as far as the public and its freedom of information, we have 579 on that, and the land is valued not at, and not anywhere close to $800,000. It's under $400,000, so we're not losing that much, okay? So, knock off $450,000 right off the bat, and we're going to be close to where we're at. So, just that everybody knows that we're on the same page. It wasn't really 1.3, the total situation. It was well under 800, I think it was around 8 or 8.5, somewhere like that, just so that everybody knows. Is there any questions? Like I said, I'm going to turn this over to Lee, so that he can, you know, answer things. But I think I wanted to spread that, to show you that they have some costs and some expensive costs coming up. Not only that, but like Dan, I think a lot of you pointed out, it's back on the tax rolls again. It's not only on the tax rolls, back for 500-whatever-thousand, okay? But if they're going to be adding two stories, then it's probably going to double that price. So, now you're going to have a million-dollar piece of property in the township, and we don't want to lose these people from the township and go to the city. We want to keep them out here.
Steve, what do you think, or if Lee wants to answer, about the earnest money? What's your opinion for the township?
I can't answer that question, but I can tell you, on other commercial properties, you know, we range anywhere from, depending on what it is, from $1,000 to $5,000. So, I mean, they have also, they have contingencies regarding financing, they have contingencies regarding feasibility of the building, and also their engineering. And if any one of those comes that it's not feasible, or they can't do what they want to do, because unfortunately, we could not find blueprints, okay, they get their money back. Okay? And that's the way we have to be. We have to be fair to everybody. It's not fair to hold someone hostage, you know, or to hold back somebody's money if it's not feasible and if they can't actually build up another one or two stories on the building, too. So, I don't think it's, I don't think it's out of line. I think that we could possibly raise it a little bit if they're willing to, but it's not anywhere out of line. Any other questions, Pete?
Anything else for Steve? Yeah, I was going to ask you, Randy, if you wanted to...
Well, just a couple of clarification points. It will not be on the tax roll for $500,000. It will be on the tax roll for $304,700, if it's, that's the full price. Right now, the true cash value is $609,332, according to our assessor, if it was in private hands. So, your tax benefit's going to be between $1,500 and $1,600 a year, so it's going to generate in taxes for the general fund. I appreciate what Steve is saying about the asking price and the selling price, but those were privately-owned businesses, and this is a government-owned facility with public dollars invested. And, you know, you have somewhat of an obligation as fiduciaries to ensure that you recover the maximum amount that you can, you know, recognizing that you have some expenses as well, roughly $33,000 if it's at the 579. So, you know, the objective was to put as much as we can towards the new buildings. And with the $500,000 that's on the table, plus the commission that would go with that, you're going to be $109,000 below what you would have otherwise had. So, just bearing those things in mind, we'll probably not be paying these buildings off in seven years. That's one full-year's payment. So, you know, the decision is up to the board, but those are just basically some of the facts surrounding it. Your appraised price in 2012 was 579 for the two buildings. So, just some data for you.
Steve, have you had any interest on the other properties?
Unfortunately, we have not at this point.
Yeah, the land is always, you always thought the land was going to be the toughest nut. That's why you wanted to package them together.
Yeah, that's what we talked about. We talked about that. And I know one thing, like I said, it's losing one year, but I know many properties like Household and Bonanza have been on the market. I mean, you haven't been officially, but they were officially on the market with me for over two years, so if you lose another year, you already have lost that under $9,000.
Yeah, and Steve is correct that the actual appraised values were not 1.3 million. That was because of the situation of the specific buyer who wanted to sell up the entire corner for commercial reasons.
Yeah. Thank you. So, I guess I just want to clarify with the different, everything going on here. So, we're looking for a building that can go up two stories, because we need roughly about $15,000 to $20,000 square feet. Right now, as a building is, it's not suitable for both companies. And not only are we looking for the $15,000 to $20,000, but also room to expand later on, should we need our own manufacturing or assembly warehouse capabilities. So, with this property, I know we have a couple of different options as well. So, that's why we put in all these contingencies on if it's structural or sound, if we're able to build on top of it, and more the logistics of what can we expand on later on. So, I can see that your concern would be if it appraises for 179, and then we offer 500,000, if you're going to lose that $70,000. But I really think that you have to realize it from our standpoint, that we're willing to put up 500,000, plus add on the additional reconstruction and adding in all the other investments that will happen in the future as well. So, I really don't think that, in long term, I don't think $79,000 would be too much of a loss now, because I know you're going to gain it back later on with two companies that are committed to making Marquette better and employing more people. Our goal for 906 Technologies, 906 Engineering, is to keep growing. And I really have a really great life hope for the expansion of this, of our company. And I think the property is a great spot, but I just also want to reiterate that with the amount of money that we need to commit to get this place exactly where we need, we have other opportunities as well. So, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that we are also taking our commitment and putting up a lot of risk as well.
Lee, what did you, are you, how are you going to be with parking with all this expansion? That was one of the reasons we moved, because we were so limited on parking. I don't know how much you're going to expand on the property itself.
But if I may, they're not in the same situation. They won't be in the same situation we were. We were operating as a public building that was going to be inviting the public in, so we have a different parking requirement if we would have stayed there and added the two floors. And in fact, that's what we had considered doing, because exactly what they're planning on doing was adding the two floors. So, Jason and I have talked about that, and from the standpoint of parking, we think that with the, being a private business and only the employees being there, they're not going to require as much parking, and even if they do need additional parking, there is green space on the site that could be converted to parking. And I don't want board members to take the comments, or Steve, or Lee, to take the comments that I made as showstoppers by any stretch of the imagination. It's just something that you have to, at least on the record, address. And Lee is making a very valid point, is that the, first of all, the $79,000 is a paper loss. We don't have $579,000 invested in the building. The building was built in, what, 1998? I think of what, no, 1983. 83, I'm sorry. 1983, and at that time, it didn't cost anywhere near that. So, basically, what you're dealing with on the appraisal is the growth in the area that is affecting that value. It's not necessarily that building, it's what property is selling for around it now and developing for. The other aspect of this is in justifying a sub-appraisal sale to your constituents, basically, as Ernie puts it, your stockholders, the residents of the township, it could be viewed as in exchange for expansion of that facility and expansion of business, an already-existing township business that's going to be expanding significantly in terms of not only their current in terms of not only their current function, but what they anticipate in terms of manufacturing. So you might even have some light industry built in which that zoning district does include. So I just want to clarify that, that that wasn't meant to showstoppers, but it's things that you need to have on the record in considering this. So you have a record if somebody comes forward at a board meeting and says, "What are you doing squandering my money?" Well, here's the reasons.
And also, I double-checked with Ernie, but I do believe when we built the township hall, we got a grant because it was an underground facility, which was supposed to be... And so we...
Energy...
We rented and spent all of that money for that building. And I have to agree with Steve to the standpoint that it's true that, you know, we could be another two years, which means we're going to keep losing this interest and this tax money on it, everything. So putting it all into perspective that way, I'm going to, just for discussion, make the motion that we accept the offer that 906 Technology has given us for the building.
You'll put dollar money on that?
Of 500,000.
Okay, that motion fails. Do you have another option somewhere in town or township? I'm just curious.
There are other facilities available.
Okay.
So, yeah. We talked with the current contractors that we do have and we were looking at, actually looking, a brand-new facility. And it would be the same amount that we're hoping for with the cost of this purchase of the township of 500,000 plus the construction that would need to be done to fulfill our needs. It'd be about the same amount for a brand-new facility. So our hopes was that with the township, we'd be able to work out with you guys.
Well, and the advantage is you can kind of get in and do it in stages too. Whereas with the new building, you've got to do it all upfront.
But unfortunately, we don't have the plan, so we don't know what capabilities of the township. So even if it comes back and says you're structurally sound for one floor, that wouldn't be enough for us. And again, we'd have to go and do a considerable amount of engineering to get it to the third floor. So there's... That's why we have the contingencies on here. There's a lot of ifs right now on exactly the structural side of the building.
So are you thinking maybe 30 days you would have an answer that whether this would work or not? I know it depends on the engineering, but...
Yeah. So we have contacted...
Depending on the timeframe.
Yeah. We are working with architects to figure out how we can get a faster solution.
Okay. John, did you have something else?
Well, I'll make a motion that the township accept five and a quarter for the property. Support.
Motion and support. Any other comments, John?
I just think that everything considered makes this something that we should accept now and get it behind us.
Randy?
I guess the only thing I would say is in that scope of a project, $25,000 isn't really that much. It is, I know it's a little bit, but I just want to try to get as much as I can for the appraised value. And I know we're not going to get that. But I think 25,000 and it's going to be a counteroffer to what they've offered. And I guess it's going to be up to them to decide if they accept it or not. But I just think that's fair and hopefully they accept it and we move on.
Randy, as far as you know, because Roger's not here, once...
This Randy?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Does this have to go back to... If we leave the contract as it is and we just change the amount, does that go back to Roger or does it can go right to them?
I would think that that's not going to be any kind of a significant change for Roger. The only thing that he might want to consider is if it's a separate corporation since 906. And you know, and Steve had said the assigns. But if there's... If they're forming a corporation, he may want to include the name of that corporation. And so that's the only question that I would have on it in terms of that. But ultimately, it's going to have... Well, this is a special meeting. You can take an action at this meeting. So you could make a contingent upon his approval. I don't think any of the language of the agreement would have to change other than just that recognition of who the actual purchaser is. Go from there. With regard to the timing, we may be able to help a little bit. And what Lee and Steve are dancing around a little bit is we can't find blueprints. You know, the building was built in '83. All of the people that have worked on it did not keep the blueprints. The original architect did not keep the blueprints. I mean, it's been 20 years. They got rid of them. They don't have them in their files. But we have come across, as you will recall, various times over since 19... Probably since the early 2000s, late '90s, 2000s, there have been building studies that have been done about renovations and about reconstruction and a variety of things. So we came up with the list just actually later today, came up with the list of all those people who had bid on those and some of them are still in business. So we may be able to locate a set of plans.
That'd save you some time and money.
Yeah, for sure, in terms of engineering.
I also like to have an answer to my question about the tax when you talk to Roger.
Oh, whether or not you can...
If we can do that or...
Oh, yeah, okay.
Put a stipulation in the deed or something?
Otherwise, that...
That would be a Roger question that he'd have to answer.
So I guess we still need his services before...
But he could... I mean, a quick email to him could have him research it and, you know, while they're doing their due diligence, putting the paperwork together. I would suspect he could probably answer that within a day. There was legislation that was fairly recently passed and I have not seen it yet, but that did put some restrictions on local governments in terms of what they can and can't require.
Especially township government, so different than the city. Every time we turn around, it's something different. Sure, go ahead.
I guess the only other comment, I say, I know you have other options, Lee, but if you do locate back in the city, your taxes will be double or three times what they will be here. So, you know, that's another plus you've got to think of down the road too.
Any other comments?
I'll be comfortable with it.
Do you... John, you were the motion maker. Do you want to put anything in about the changing the name as far as the motion?
Well, we don't know the LLC, but that's not important. What are we accepting? That's the number that we're after. So as long as we do that and get that behind us today, we will have accomplished a lot. So roll call vote.
Ernie?
Sent back and listening to some of my comments and I look at it. Once the property is sold, all of a sudden, it's going to be on the tax rolls. No more maintenance and no more security on the property. That's all going to be to our benefit in that too. So I look at it all the time from the treasurer's standpoint. I always like to get every dollar I can to the benefit of the township. And everyone knows me for that.
No, that's our job.
So I have no problem with this and that. Looking at what their projection into the future, I think is going to be a big asset to the township. Whether they want to go the next dollar amount upwards, I don't know. That's going to be... Their board's going to have to make that decision. And I don't think it can be done tonight at this point in time. So unless he has been given absolute control and that...
No, I'd like to discuss it.
So, but I don't have any problem with that. And it may be that he'll come back with something and we have to yes or no or make a change. Who knows?
Would I get a final listing of the county? Yep, when they have the motion, we'll have that by tomorrow. I don't really know.
Something, please. I like the idea that this is going to be something that will expand. I think if it was just a straight building and I think we would... I would probably want to try to get a little closer to appraised value because that would be all they were doing other than upgrades inside. But the fact that they want to invest even more, if it's possible, it's not so bad. I like the motion because I think that'll help cover some of the commission and it won't be quite as much of a shock to be that far below. So, yeah, I think it's a good offer. So we're still good? Everybody's... No more comments? Okay.
Does Lee have any comments?